Twenty-four dash twenty-eight Thompson. Can please come forward to the table, make sure the mic's on. Adam will read in the exhibits here and then you'll be sworn in.
All right, we have the application as A1. Three sheet site plan as A2. The impervious surface breakdown as well as the stormwater management, small project volume control sheets, those are collectively marked as A3. B1, proof of publication. B2, proof of posting. And B3, notice the neighbors.
Would you each state and spell your phone name, please?
Bob Thompson, T-H-O-M-P-S-O-N.
Tracy Thompson. Am I on?
Yeah, you're on. Do you both soundly swear affirm with testimony about to give, shall be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes.
Okay, go ahead and present. And we can pull up on the screen anything, the plans and that.
Just waiting for this click share to start.
Yes, you're presenting your appeal.
All right, I didn't know who was waiting for what. Thank you for having us. We sat down this year and decided after a lifetime of pools as we were growing up, it was time for us to invest and have one of our own. We're both retired. We have a large extended family that we'd like to have over more often during the summer months, and two large dogs that we hope we can keep out when they're supposed to be out of the pool. We moved in in 2006 and really enjoyed the neighborhood the whole time.
Okay, okay, while we wait for it to come up, I guess I have a couple of questions here. What is the impervious allowed? What are they going for here?
The existing is 25.1. They're proposing 27.3, and 18 is the allowable amount.
Zoom in, and zoom in, and then you can describe what it is you're planning to do per the plan there.
Sure. In the backyard, the pool's actually one of the smallest ones we could find by design. It's less than 10 by 20 feet. Kidney-shaped pool. It won't be any deeper, I think, than five foot, three to five foot. Wanted to put it close to our existing patio and just integrate it into that space off to the side. The rest of the yard is pretty open. There you go. Yeah, that's the pool area there. Also wanted to integrate, we have some blue slate, so we wanted to incorporate that as the surround, so it looks seamless if it was always there.
Another question for you, Dan. This seems to be a different strategy than we've seen typically for infiltration. I believe it's acceptable, but is it acceptable for the engineering standards we have?
I'll let Jim speak for the engineering, but I do know it potentially would need to be made bigger if it were to get back to the 18 percent. But I can't speak for the engineering.
Yes, the system would be acceptable according to our ordinance. It does meet the standards, and I believe they're taking it back to what is currently existing on the property by the size that they have proposed.
So, questions from other board members?
And so, we're supposed to have, by ordinance, 18 percent? Dan, is that correct?
That's, 18 percent is when the subdivision was built, what was allowable. But they're currently over that. It could just be an existing nonconformity. But yeah, 18 percent is what the ordinance says.
Yeah, and actually, if I could clarify. At the time that this development was done, they did not have a standard for impervious surface. They only had a standard for building coverage, I believe, of 15 percent. Later, when they came up with the impervious surface calculations in the mid-'90s, they added 3 percent onto all the lots that had the 15 percent, thinking that was sufficient, although as you can tell by the number of variances we have, that obviously is not enough in many of the homes, just by virtue of being built and having their driveway and minor improvements are over that 18 percent. But 18 percent is what is currently required.
Judy or Mike, any comments?
If it was, you know, 20, this is like 7 percent over what's allowable, and I had to come back to my 18 percent even though what we planned. Is there something they could do to mitigate further? I mean, I don't know the topography of the property to be able to suggest.
Yeah, so I think what's currently proposed is one, the trench is one by three by 62. So if they just made it a little bit deeper and a little bit wider, it would account back to 18 percent. So 71 cubic feet is what's required to bring it back to the existing, but they would need 310 cubic feet to bring it back to 18 percent. So if it was roughly two and a half by five feet by 62, that would work.
Would that work for y'all?
Is that the underground effort that needs to happen? We won't see it, it's just underground.
No, I know they call it a trench, but it's not. When you're looking, it's, it's normal.
Yeah, we can get it back to the pool company.
It's normal. Hear the word trench and it's like a...
In order for that to be effective, though, to mitigate that much surface area, it looks like there would also need to be rain leaders tied to it. I'm just trying to look at the grading plan for the property there.
The backyard slopes away from us.
Away from, yeah.
And because of the overhead wires, we had it moved the pool a little closer to the house.
I understood that.
Which is fine.
Yeah, and it appears if you look at the plan, they have a designation RD and then PU. I think those are the rain, the roof drains, and you have little pop-up drains. Is that what you have out there?
Yeah, pulled away from the yard. They're out about 10 or 20 feet.
Yeah, so I think what they're saying is to be effective, it may need to have a few of those drains tied into the storm system, so it captures more of the runoff from your roof. So the effect of your extra work will be actually an improvement in the whole neighborhood.
Mike, yeah, all right. Another comment from the board right now? Is there any public comment in the room? Okay, there is no public comment online. I'm watching the light. So I guess we're at the point where we'll entertain a motion.
Let me get myself together here. I move that we approve, I have to look at the number again, I'm apologizing, I'm not, thank you, Z2428. We approve with the condition that the trench is enlarged and that the pop-ups are tied into the trench with the approval of the township engineers.
To an effective rate of...
To an effective, to an effective rate of 18 percent. Thank you.
I'll second that.
Any discussion? Any comments? All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
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 There you go, motion carries, and you're good to go.
Thank you.
Has Miller gotten here yet? Okay, so if you can come forward, please. And Mr. Flager here will read in the exhibits, including the updated exhibits, and then he can be sworn in.
Okay, we previously marked everything last, or the originally submitted exhibits last meeting, or when we had this, many meetings ago.
Many meetings ago, yes.
So we have a few new exhibits. A5 is going to be the updated relief requested. A6 is going to be the revised plans. And then B4 is the revised proof of publication. B5, excuse me, B4 revised proof of publication. B5 revised proof of posting. And B6 revised notice to the neighbors.
Would you each state and spell your phone name, please?
Suzanne Farrell.
Tracy Miller, T-R-A-C-Y.
Do you both soundly swear affirm with testimony about to give, shall be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I swear, yes.
Go ahead and present your updated plan, in case there's somebody that hasn't seen it yet, because it is a change.
The last time we were, sorry, the last time we were here, we had a proposal for an addition of the, on the rear of the house, as well as a detached garage, that required having a driveway to attach to it. The total impervious cover at that time was 49.8 percent, and 26 percent is allowed. We were asked to go back and revise the plan, and there were some suggestions made by some of the board members to improve the chances of getting this approved. So we took the garage, attached it to the house on the right-hand side, there we go. And the rear addition remains largely the same. In doing this, though, we were able to get the impervious cover down to 34.9 percent, still with the 26 percent permitted. The downside of this option, we already had the extension of the existing nonconformance on the left-hand side of the house, where the house is only 10 feet off the property line, where it's, should be 15 feet. By adding the garage on the right-hand side, we are also creating a variance that's required on that side as well. So that's where we are.
Questions from the board? Particularly since I'm not sure that everybody on the board here was here for the previous hearing, Adam.
So you're increasing the impervious surface to above the allowable amount. What are you doing to eradicate that?
So the homeowners are going to have a civil engineer take over, assuming they get approval, but there will be an infiltration trench to get them to the 26 percent. They started off with 26.8 percent is their existing cover, so they're already over.
Have you talked to the neighbors about the setback?
No.
Need to be on the mic so that it's recorded and so that people who are online can see.
No one seemed to mind. I don't know, unless someone cares and they didn't tell me so, but yeah. Several of the neighbors told me they hope I get what I ask for, but I don't know if there's anyone that I don't know that's not happy.
The neighbor on the immediate side where the addition is going, and you're going to be six feet from the property line? Or 10 feet is...
On the left or...
On the right, as you're looking at the house.
Jack and Lynn, no, they seemed happy. They didn't seem to care.
That was my concern after our last meeting, that once it's up, people get a little, I don't know what the word would be, a little annoyed when it's too close to their property lines. That's my only concern.
Yeah, and you did address the scaling back the size.
Yes.
I will say that, you did listen to us on that.
I know, and I...
And the township who was participating independently, you noticed, is not here tonight because they decided that they don't need to participate. It's purely a zoning discussion.
Yeah, the township is not. And I assume the neighbors all got notices, of course.
Yeah, we, when they resubmitted plans, we re-advertized, and we increased the amount of neighbors that were notified. Because I think when we, when they first came to the zoning hearing board, there were fewer neighbors, but since we codified the ordinance, it's now 200 feet, so more people have been notified since they updated the plans.
I just have a quick thing to clarify. Is the setback is now going to be six feet, and originally it was going to be five feet for the garage?
So originally, it was detached, which would have only required...
That would have been a five-foot setback where 10 is required, but now it's six feet where 15 is required.
Now it's six feet, but it's attached, so it would require the 15.
Correct, but it is technically a foot.
Correct, yes.
Over. Okay, just wanted to clarify that on the record.
Mike, any questions?
How close is the other, let's call it 206? I'm trying to pull it up on the map here.
So the existing house is 10 feet from the property line on that side.
208, what about 206? Is 206 10 feet?
Two, if you're talking about the house on the left, yes, 10 feet.
I think he's trying to ask about the house on the right.
On the right.
Oh, what is it now?
Their, their house.
Well, it just looks like, what my concern is if you go six feet, that looks like it's, that one's awful, tight as it is also.
Oh, the one on the other, okay, yeah, I don't know. Can we see...
That it'll make it so you won't be able to get anything through.
Yeah, that's true.
Well, that's the six feet on their side.
Yeah, they also have on...
Then the other neighbor must have a nonconformance.
That's what I'm...
Yeah, but that's, that's on their side.
That's not their fault. That's...
Good, good question, Mike. Well, let's, let's see if there's any public comment in the room on this appeal. Nobody's here for public comment? Okay. There's nobody online, so back to the board. It's certainly been noticed twice, as Dan pointed out.
It appears that a lot of those homes and whatever was done to them after the original, a lot of them are nonconforming on these lots. Seems like there was a lot of building done before anyone obviously cared.
And, well, these homes were done many years ago. Many of them only have a 10-foot setback. Some may even have a lesser setback, just that's the way it was existing in the entire neighborhood, because they were done prior to the implementation of setback requirements.
I mean, this, this, I know the neighborhood, and it's, it's not as like if you go to a modern, you know, more modern neighborhood, it's almost like too neat. It's, this is more organic, as I would, might say. Different neighborhood.
I guess there's no more, there's no public comment, you've said your piece, and we have the board here, and the board, I guess, will entertain a motion.
I move that we approve item Z dash 24 dash 13, as stated.
With the updated relief.
With the updated relief, sure.
And with the revised plans and the mitigation of the stormwater back to an effective rate of 26 percent, subject to the approval of the township engineer.
As you say.
Any discussion on the, from the board here?
I do have one thing to add, Mr. Solar. I did look up the original house plan for 206 West Ferry, the adjoining property, and their plan showed that it was proposed to be built 12 feet from the property line. So there will be, well, might be less, but there, it's not six feet like it appears on the aerial photograph. It's somewhere greater than 10.
Thank you. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay, is there any discussion? Like I said, I appreciate that we were listened to on this one, so, and that you went and talked to your neighbors, otherwise I clearly would be here, given our past experiences on other appeals. All right, all those in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Aye. Post? Okay, motion carries, thank you. Next up, appeal Z24 dash 31 McCubbin. Hello? So, Mr. Flager, want to read in the exhibits and...
Sure. We have the application as A1, two-sheet site plan says A2. The impervious surface breakdown calculations and stormwater management, small project volume control, those are collectively A3. B1, proof of publication. B2, proof of posting. And B3, notice the neighbors.
Do you state and spell your phone name, please?
Rob, excuse me.
Rob.
McCubbin, M-C-C-U-B-B-I-N.
Soundly swear with testimony about to give, shall be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes.
Okay, go ahead and describe while I get the drawing pulled up.
So first thing, so I'm not the homeowner. The homeowner was unable to make it to me.
You've been in front of us many times.
You're a frequent flyer. Jim's going to get you a bed here, just in case you need it.
You kind of know the drill.
Okay, so we have, we're looking to install an in-ground concrete swimming pool with a little bit of patio around it. So right now, we have a 15,000-square-foot lot that is zoned R2 with a 24 percent maximum impervious surface. The, what's existing on the lot currently is a dwelling, driveway, a combination of concrete patio walkways, there's a hot tub pad, shed, and a set of Bilco doors, which currently puts the lot at 31.55 percent. So we are looking to, as I said, install the pool, patio, and a mechanical pad for the swimming pool, which is an increase of 588 square feet. However, it would put us at 35.47 percent. So that's the request that we're looking for. We do have a stormwater management plan in place that will mitigate us down to the 24 percent. So I believe the seepage bed design, it is designed for 1,720 square feet, which is the overage of, of the property, of the 24 percent currently.
Yeah, I did the math. I think it's a little bit below 24, too, so you have a little, a little extra, yeah?
Okay, I have a question here. I mean, it's already significantly over, and this is more, more so. Reducing the impervious request, are they open to removing some of the existing impervious? For instance, there seems to be, what's shown here, a concrete area between the house and the property line, not there, but above that, between the house, between the house and the property line. It looks at the concrete shown running the whole length of the building, house there.
I believe, yeah, it's a walkway to the Bilco door.
It seems pretty extensive. I mean, that, this is my question here. Would they be amenable to removing some of the existing impervious surface to try to reduce the situation here?
Can't 100 percent answer that. I think if anything, rather than cut that concrete... Can't 100% answer that. I think if anything, rather than cut that concrete up, I think if anything, we could, I mean, most of the pool's a three-foot walkway, so it's not, there's not a whole lot around the pool itself. Um, but, yeah, I, I don't know, I don't know if he'd want to cut through that existing concrete and chop that up, um, the existing stuff, just from, from an aesthetic standpoint.
Other board questions?
I don't know.
I know there's other questions, so.
I don't exactly know where the control joints are in the concrete, so I don't know how much we'd be able to get out and try to make it look aesthetic.
Yeah, and then like, and I understand what you're showing around the pool makes sense, but like I said, in the past, like the last appeal, you saw, there was a discussion about reducing the, the impervious request by other methods, so. But other board questions. It, it looks fairly wide.
Yeah, it's-
That's wide.
Yeah, I mean, it's not like a nor, like-
The walkway?
Yeah, it's, oh, good, he's got, he's got his tools. He can tell us how wide it is. Thank you.
Four and a half feet. Four and a half that walkway is.
And that's larger than accessible.
The walkway around the pool's three.
I mean, accessibility would be what, three? Yeah, sidewalks are normally three for accessible, and that's even wider than I have on my street, because we're old.
Other, Mike, Chris, Judy?
I, I have the same concern. I mean, that's a lot of concrete, but, I mean, there's just, there is a lot going on with the separate hot tub pad, and, and I understand the need for the shed. That's, that, that I definitely understand, but it's a lot of concrete.
I mean, if, if you remove the entire thing, you'd probably pull out 150 feet, two up 100 feet. No, it wouldn't.
I have a couple of questions. The shed down in the corner, is that existing?
Yes.
Do we know the dimensions it is off the property line?
It is not 10 feet.
How many square feet is it? Because if it's less than 200 square feet, the current ordinance says five feet. Anything over-
Seventy-four.
Square feet?
Yeah.
Uh, so if it's less than, if it's five feet, then it's fine.
It is five, six, seven, eight and a half, one side, six on the other side, just over six on the other side.
Okay, all right.
Uh, so you did change, I wasn't aware of that. I thought, I thought I put that in the application, the shed.
No, it's fine. If it's-
Sorry, yeah, I thought I put that in the application, the shed, because I always thought it was 10. Which is existing as well. It is. That's, yeah, that was existing.
All right, another question here. The inlet and the grading plan showed, shows this basically on the high side of the property. Um, so how is the, how is water going to end up getting directed from the impervious surfaces?
Well, I think the, I think the inlet, that area where the inlet is primarily going to capture that large patio area off the house, and it's going to take that and funnel that back into the, um, to the stormwater system on the backside of the pool.
Oh, well, like you heard earlier, what are the rain leaders here attached to?
Um, that I don't know. It is, he has them marked on there, but I don't know, they have to go underground somewhere because they go under that concrete, so they don't just spill onto the concrete. So they're going on the ground somewhere. I don't see the pop-ups, though, that he has pop-ups marked out. I mean, the stormwater system could, he, he could potentially move it to the 92-91 contour and slide it around that way, so it would capture everything on the downhill side towards the shed. But I think the purpose of that inlet was definitely to catch that large concrete patio by the house.
Well, you, you could still put that inlet in and run, run the drain on the plan north side of, past the pool, since you're reworking that area, so it's still feasible.
Yes. Yeah, I don't know what his thought was for, for the placement of that. He's the engineer, so he put the plans together, so he would obviously comply to anything that the township engineer would have to say about it as well. But that could be easily moved.
I mean, the concrete patio is quite large.
Yes, it is. That's probably, probably the big driver here on the existing.
Yeah, that's a large amount.
As I'm looking at it, that and the driveway seems fairly wide, but-
Yeah, I can understand, yeah, the driveway is wide. The patio's huge. Appears that anyway.
Thirty-four, five. I could prob, I could probably bring it, still make it look good for me, probably bring it down almost a full percent to 34.54.
Um, could, I mean, I don't, I mean, I'm looking at the plans. I see the house size, the driveway, the walkways. The patio is included with the walkways in the square footage, or is it patio?
That's all existing stuff. We're just doing the patio around, like, what, all that's proposed is, is 588 square feet around the pool.
Yeah, it's the existing that was starting out at 31, I think, is what you said.
The existing was at 31.
It's just adding more.
Yeah, it's just adding more, which is why we're looking for offsets here.
Understood. Understood.
I mean, it's a large patio. We don't know the square footage of it.
Right, but I, so I could take patio basically off two sides of this pool. Off the backside of the pool.
Oh, I see what you're saying, because they'd still have the access around the one side of the hot tub.
Exactly, and that could be landscaped there, and we can make it look good. And that would, that would free up 138 square feet, what I just did. Um, still give him his walkway to get around kind of the, the tanning ledge portion of the pool where they can get in and out, and then the swim out portion in the deep end where they can get in and out of the deep end. Um, but I think you'd be, I think that would work. And like I said, that, that would bring it down to 34.54%. And we could keep the stormwater the same size.
Which would bring it down.
I, I, there is constraints with this property, too, just like the last one. It's a smaller piece of property, and it's already, there's some-
I was aware of that. I kind of looked at it.
So just a question, is the homeowner available at all right now, tonight, or?
He's on vacation.
Okay.
So he's not even in the country.
Okay.
And he asked if I, you know, he didn't want to push it to December, so, and I said I would come, so.
So the modification you basically just said right now is it would be the 34.5-
34.54.
34.54, and mitigate it back to 23% effective, right? Because you said you'd keep the-
Correct.
Yeah.
So it would be, we'd be shaving off 138 square feet roughly.
I'm, I'm willing to listen up, I mean, there's other board members here, so please weigh in. Mike?
I, I keep looking at the, just the, the plan versus the existing on, like, Google Earth, and it just seems like the, the deck is, could be reworked. It just seems like right where the tanning ledge is in the steps, you're going to have like a three-foot section is that, and that's not paved? Like, that weird middle section, it just, just seems like we could make a compromise here to get the, get them a nicer pool deck with removing some of that concrete patio, just kind of reworking it so that they'd have more usable area that would just work better for everybody. It just, you know what I mean? Like, if you look at it, see how it's, it's like, there's a block of, of no patio, then there's a, then you, there is patio, pavers, and then there's another block of no patio. Just seems like, uh, I don't know. I, I, I don't, I don't have a suggestion for it, but it just, it's, I don't know. Just seems like a lot of, a lot of coverage that's, uh, you know, like I said, could be straightened out a little better.
Well, I mean, basically what we're, there would be potentially some flexibility in what they do. It's the, the percentage we're pretty much agreeing to here, um, since everything else doesn't require a variance, so they could tweak it a little bit within the boundaries of that proposed reduction for the impervious request. Um, the question, I guess, is do we think that's enough?
What about we got rid of the hot tub patio?
The, the, the other solution would be we make, before we make a motion, make the suggestion, perhaps going back and, Mr. McCubbin goes back and talks to the homeowner about it.
Peter, I think, you know, Peter, I think you made a, made me to talk to the homeowner before we, because it isn't, it's just, when I look at it, I just see like big glops of concrete.
But it's existing concrete, it's, it's the, and he doesn't have any.
He doesn't, I understand. He can't, that's why I think maybe talk to the homeowner.
Yes. If, if that's the case, then we can do a continuance, we can trot it.
I, I think that might be a-
I, I, I think you're heading in the right direction, but I think you need to engage my recommendation, obviously, and it's not the whole board here, I'm just speaking for myself.
No, it'd be easier if he was here, so I don't want to make any decisions.
To think about it.
Start cutting and chopping right here.
Yeah, correct. And, and we do understand you're starting from a position where there, there's a, there's a certain amount that just can't go away, you know, so.
I mean, I don't know what he wants to cut through in terms of that existing, too, and try to make it look decent.
Look nice, I know.
So.
Okay.
I'll have to get back to you guys on that hearing, because the next one's the third.
The third, yeah.
The third?
I think we're going to be ready for that.
Okay.
Because we're going to have to, this whole plan changed, too, and he's away till next week, and then I'm away next week.
It would be the January 7th.
It is, yeah.
Okay.
Okay, entertain a motion.
I, I move that we have a continuance and appeal Z 24-31 to the January 7th meeting.
Second.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, it's continued, and thank you for trying to work with us, but-
No problem. I understand. Thank you, guys. Have a good holiday.
You, too. Next up is appeal Z 24 dash 32. If you can come forward while Mr. Flager reads in the exhibits.
We have the application as A1, the site plans as A2, the, uh, letter in support of the application signed by, uh, a number of the neighbors as A3, B1, proof of publication, B2, proof of posting, and B3, notice to the neighbors.
Just state his full name, please.
Cam Urian, U-R-I-O-N.
Do you swear a firm testimony about the gifts, will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Okay, go ahead and explain your request.
Good evening. Um, we've had-
Make sure you're speaking into the microphone.
We've had goats and chickens for approximately nine years on less than half acre of, uh, property on Morris Lane. Um, we're requesting a variance to, uh, keep them as long as, you know, possibly, uh, till they pass on. Maybe we don't get any more, but maybe we do.
All right, questions from the board? Before we get to public comment, I think there's a couple of questions that can be asked here.
So I see that you are building a chicken run, or do you have that in existence?
No, everything is, everything's existing.
Okay, how close is that chicken run to the property line?
Uh, approximately 10 feet.
10 feet. Seventy-five by 55. And on the signature list, your immediate neighbors on both sides have agreed that there's not a problem.
They're actually all here. You would raise your hands.
Oh, wow.
I see a component of this variance being a numeric limitation to this, so how many goats and how many chickens?
We have four chickens and we have five Nigerian dwarf. Yeah, they are.
Okay, the location is up on the, uh, screen right now. Okay, um, any other questions from the board?
As long as there's no roosters, it's pretty quiet.
Actually, there'll probably be another part of this, too, then.
We did, we did have roosters. Um, they were removed probably back in December. Uh, there was a complaint about them. We got rid of them.
Now I sleep in there every morning.
How long have you had the goats?
Exactly.
Pardon me?
How long? How long have you had the-
Uh, approximately nine years.
How many chickens would you, would be, you said four, is it likely you'd want more at some point?
Um, I mean, depending on, we've been through a number of chickens with, you know, hawks and animals in the neighborhood. Um, we've had as many as six, but I don't think we've ever had more than six, uh, chickens. Originally, we only had two goats.
Okay. Other questions from the board? All right, public comment. Does anybody want to come up and make public comment, or, okay? You can, you can stay seated. There's enough other, you can come up. I was talking to- Make sure you turn the microphone on, if it's not.
Just, uh.
Uh, my name is Christine Janaski, uh, behind me is my husband Jeff. We live directly across the street from Ken, uh, we just moved in in August and, um, we, we have no problems with the animals being there, it was actually one of the features that we liked when we came to see the house.
Can you, can you just let him swear you in and then continue?
Oh, I'm sorry. Uh, Christine, C H R S, C H R I S T I N E, Janaski, J A N A S K I.
Jeff Janaski, J A N A S K I.
Do you both sign and swear affirm testimony about the gifts, should be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes.
Yes.
Um, so, yes, so, um, we live directly across the street from the Urians. Uh, they take excellent care of the animals, they're not a nuisance, uh, we actually enjoy them being there, we don't have a, a problem with them being there. I don't know if my husband wants to say anything else.
It was, it was one of the things that attracted us to the house, we had chickens at our old house where we came from.
Out of town, we just moved.
And we just moved and we're like, oh, we're back at our old house.
So, um, we, we would respectfully request that they get approved tonight for the, for the variance. Thank you.
Okay. Like, go ahead, come on up, state your name, get sworn in.
My name is Brendan Mason.
By the left hand?
M A S O N.
So I swear affirm testimony about the gifts, should be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Whole truth. Uh, so I am the neighbor directly next to the Urians at two seventeen Morris Lane. Uh, I've been there over a year, never once smelled goats, never once heard goats. I can't even see them from my property, um, the chicken coop or the chicken run and the goat pen is closer. Never see them, never smell them, never hear them, um, I have a newborn at home, it's, I'm actually excited to be able to take him next door instead of having to drive all the way down to the city to take him to the zoo. Um, I think it would be cool to, not that they have a zoo, but it'd be cool to, um, you know, expose him to that, I grew up in the city that we had rats and pigeons, um, so I think it's, it's awesome. I think it would be a disservice to the neighborhood to force them to get rid of them, um, they've been there nine years, never been a problem. I don't see why it's a problem going forward, as I said, I'm directly next to them, never see them, never smell them, never hear them. So I guess my two cents.
Okay, there's no public comment online, anything else from the board?
In regards to the current ordinance, uh, with the five acres, what is the numbers of chickens or goats that would be allowed?
It would be five. A lot of goats is five, according to the ordinance.
Okay.
Yeah, I mean, and because it's a variance, we can set the limitations.
I understand, but we have to also consider, he said he may not replace them, or he may replace them, he may get more, right? So we want to be careful.
We would never get more than what we have now, so we would never have.
Doing for what I was gonna propose for, for variance. Okay, I make a motion to approve appeal Z twenty-four dash thirty-two subject to limitations of no more than five goats, no more than six chickens, and that the chickens must all be hens.
And I, I'll happily second that.
All right, any discussion? All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, motion carries.
Thank you very much.
Chris.
No, Judy did.
Judy. All right, next up is appeal Z twenty-four dash thirty-three. Are you here, uh, this is Fairless? Are they online? Okay, we will move on to appeal Z twenty-four dash thirty-four, if you can come up, okay.
He said he'd be here, I spoke to him via email, so.
Hey, good evening, can anybody hear me?
Yes, so, um, Mr. Flagler, read in the exhibits here and then you'll be sworn in.
Okay.
Application A1, uh, site plan is A2, the impervious surface and stormwater collectively are, uh, wait, didn't I, I might be wrong, I'm sorry. B1, proof of publication, B2, proof of posting, and B3, notice to the neighbors.
Do you state and swear your full name, please?
Uh, yeah, first name Brandon, last name Fairless, F A I R L E S S.
Do you sign and swear or affirm testimony about the gifts, should be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes.
Okay, uh, go ahead and explain what it is you want to do, and I believe Dan or Jim here will pull up the exhibit.
Sure, so, um, good evening, everyone, my name's Brandon, uh, moved here with my wife and kids, uh, over the summer. Um, we're hoping to put in a fence along our property mainly so our dog has some room to run outside. In the process of doing that, attained a fencing survey and learned that there is a sewage easement, um, on one side of our property, so have filed a variance, um, to be able to build to kind of out to the property line, um, really for the sole purpose of just kind of maximizing, you know, the space that we'd be able to utilize for that.
This one's easy.
Well, there's a couple of questions that have to be asked, so.
So, first question I have, and I've heard it asked on this same type of arrangement. Uh, if we were to allow you to build your fence on that sewer easement, would you bear the expense of removal of that fence should the sewage department need to come through and work on their systems?
Yes.
Just, just for clarity, the, um, this is a sewer drain easement, so it's the lower Mcfield Public Works Department would, would be in charge of that.
Storm sewer, not sanitary. Okay.
And then we would prefer that the fence be, um, three feet off the.
But that was the question I was gonna ask, was I would see the, the, it looked like the fence, it looked like the drainage line was underneath the, uh, proposed location. So the other comment that would be, would be, as was being talked about here, was that, uh, we don't want you drilling fence post holes directly on top of the drain pipe?
Actual drain, sure.
So you would have to offset a few feet on your property, are you open to that?
Yes.
Are there any, with this, this easement, I, since I see there's yard, yard drain, I don't suspect there is, but are there any concerns with the fence type? Drainage?
No, I don't think he submitted the permit yet, so I'm not sure what type of, what type of fence it would be.
It would be, we're, we're planning for just like a black aluminum fencing, so it should have spacing and everything, um, and it.
Yeah, that would, that would be fine.
So that would allow the flow of water to get through?
Yep.
Yeah.
Peter, if I may, can I ask one question? Relative to flow of water, is it, are the, are there, are these easements just for pipes? For storm, storm sewer pipes, or are they easements for actual swales that are above the pipes as well?
Uh, there are swales, but they're not very large swales, cause it's a, a very small drainage area that contributes to the storm drain.
Yeah, you can, you can see the swale on the, the topography there. But we've typically said that they've had, that's why we asked the question about type of fence, if this is an open fence, it's a less of an issue.
Yeah, I'm just, so in most states, when they, say you're in a flood hazard area, an open fence would be like, uh, it wouldn't be a chain link or something, it would be a typical farm post and rail one with a big gap, so you could get flow through there, so what some people call an open fence is very different from what regulatory agencies would call an open fence.
Back to the board, any questions? Okay, any public comment in the room here? Okay, you come up to the, uh, table, state your name and get sworn in, or to the microphone there.
Could you put the diagram up?
Uh, you need, yeah.
My name is Mark Sanford, I'm on.
You can move the mic up too, if you want to.
Take it out if you need to.
My name is Mark Sanford, S A N F O R D. I believe I'm on the adjoining property eight seven nine Big Oak Road along the whole backside of that development.
Is it Mark with a K or C?
N A R K, M A R C, yeah, M A R K, sorry, you're confusing me.
Do you sign and swear affirm testimony about the gifts, should be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I swear. Uh, could we bring up the picture, I just wanna confirm where the line is, cause I think my yard is, uh, directly along the backside.
Bring the microphone with you. With you, if you're gonna.
Well, I just wanna confirm first, um, my property is here, and his line is there, I assume that the fence is gonna go, is there gonna be any, um, buffer so that you can go behind the fence and clean things up and do maintenance on the fence?
That's, that's not part of our, here, that's a township, that's part of the question.
Just, just asking the question then.
I guess, uh, that question's for the homeowner, I guess the question is, how far do you propose to have the fence off the property line? Is it gonna be like the typicals six inches off the fence, or do you plan to have it further off the line that it could create a maintenance issue?
Um, I think when I measured the distance, it will be in, I think it was probably ten or eleven feet in from the property line, kind of the way things are set up, there's kind of a line of trees and then we'd have a little bit of buffer space and then the fence would be there, so I wanna say it's about ten or eleven feet in from the back of the property line.
Okay, so there's, there's kind of a hill buffer there, um, where you have a little bit of room inside the, the tree line, but you're assuming to, bring that on to the yard?
Yes, so bringing the fence kind of closer to the house, I think, yeah, probably about ten or eleven feet in from the actual property line.
Okay, I have no other issues.
Okay, and, and technically that isn't part of the variance, the only thing the variance is about is about putting the fence, yeah.
I know, but we're here talking about this now, so it makes a good point to do it.
Thanks. All right, we'll entertain a motion. There's nobody online else.
Go for it. I don't even know where to go with this one.
Make a motion to approve appeal Z twenty-four dash thirty-three, subject to the location of the fence being three feet off the center line of the pipe, and that the fence will be removed at the cost, removed and reinstalled at the cost of the homeowner if the township needs access in order to work on the storm sewer easement.
I'll second it.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
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 Okay, motion carries, you're done, thanks.
Thank you.
All right. Next up is appeal Z twenty-four dash thirty-four, and you guys have to be thankful this went a lot faster tonight than it could've.
I understand what you're saying.
You wanna read in the exhibits?
Screen?
Yes.
We have the, uh, application as A1, one sheet site plans as A2, renderings of the garage addition as A3. Uh, A4 is gonna be the impervious surface and stormwater sheets, um, B1, proof of publication, B2, proof of posting, and B3, notice to the neighbors.
Do you state and swear your full name?
Uh, how's everybody doing, uh, name's John Melphi, J O H N M E L F I.
Do you sign and swear affirm testimony about the gifts, should be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do, thank you. Again, how's everyone doing? Again, name's John Melphi, uh, recently bought a house on Seven Berkeley with my girlfriend and her son. And it fit all of our needs, um, and one thing was, uh, we have, we're a four-car family right now, and it's, you guys hear me, okay? Um, we're a four-car family right now, and it's a two-car garage that is, um, attached, but it's, so the house is built in nineteen fifty, so it's a bit, um, run down, the concrete, concrete slabs, a little bit beat. So in the idea, I also would like to, um, just make a little more, I, I work on the cars that I have, so it, I wanna make it a little more reasonable to do, like, work on my own cars there. But in the renovation process, the idea was being said, we have a, you know, a four-car family, it'd be nice to add another garage to allow us to garage three of our cars at least. Um, the proposed thing, uh, currently, just so, we're zone R2. Yeah, so, right, those are just the general renderings of what we were thinking, but, um, the current impervious surface after the survey was nineteen point five, uh, the required is eighteen, so it was nineteen point five before we purchased. This would take it to, um, twenty-three point five. And currently, um, based on the calculation sheets you guys provide, um, was looking for tree coverage right now, which I've seen, based on, I read a couple of the previous ones, you guys don't tend to, I don't see many tree coverages, so, but I figured I'd give it a try, I don't know what exhibit that is, if you guys could pull it up, but using like a Google's map thing with, uh, we have a lot of trees in the neighborhood, so it's a lot of large trees that cover most of the property, um. And with that calculation, we're, we more than cover and get back to beyond the eighteen with the trees. Not opposed to an infiltration pit, if that's the difference between getting this approved and not getting it approved, but, um, so that's the, that's for the impervious surface variance, but then also the garage, in order to have a standard garage size, which is like twelve foot wide, it takes us within the fifteen foot, um, offset on the side yard to my neighbors to the right, um, looking to take it to ten, cause right now the current offset's twenty-two. So, spoke to any neighbor I could, only been there for like five, six months, so as I see them in passing, spoke directly to the neighbors, um, to the right, and there's no issue there, um, spoke to Jan, she's behind me, she's to my left, um, and then the surrounding neighbors, and then anybody we see, just kind of make a point to mention it so they know that we're not just like trying to build a McMansion or something weird.
Questions from the board, he's already acknowledged it, so go ahead, but yes, you can make a point of it.
I make, I make the point, yes, I love the trees, but they don't live forever, as I found out with mine. And someone else might not love them after you, so you can't count on them as mitigating water. As, as attractive as they are, they are. I think that using, doing a trench might be, a, it's a more permanent solution.
Yeah, I, I kinda took a glance at your property on Google overhead, you know, and, you know, you have a lot of trees behind your house. Uh, looking at the topography on this, your property slopes down in the back and down in the front. So any water coming off the front, the roof and everything in the front, the trees in the back aren't gonna matter.
Yeah.
Uh, you have a few trees out front, they're not really gonna do a difference, uh, and you don't have curbs in that street, correct? Yeah, so everything that runs off is gonna collect on the lawns, on the street, uh, and that's a lot of impervious surface being added to that, and I, I think you're gonna need a trench out there.
All right, I'm waiting to hear what the neighbors' comments are on the setback and potentially drainage issues, but Mike, do you have anything you wanna ask?
No, I, I, I'm, I'm with you, as long as there, you know, I'd like to see some type of trench, uh, to pick up the extra water, but other than that, I don't really have a problem with it.
Okay. I believe there's public comment, I'm not sure though, is there a public comment on this?
No, on the other side.
Okay, there's no public comment online, so I think we're back to the board discussing the particular application here.
Uh, another question, on the side of your property where you're building your garage, have you spoken to that neighbor directly?
Yes.
What's your feedback?
Yeah, no feedback, most people, um, cause the neighborhood is not so cookie cutter, it kind of is like a bunch of houses that look different, everything, and they're more, they're, they've done renovations to their own house, from what I've gathered, what they said, they just, anything that they, in their eyes that improves anything in the neighborhood, they're okay with, and they don't have a, they don't care about the getting closer.
And I don't see, you know, as you heard us talk about with the pool, I'm, was looking here for things that could be done to offset, but it looks like you're pretty.
Yeah.
Minimal at the current extent here, and you're pretty much a straight to the, straight to the street, so. What's the deck in the back there? Is that, what type of deck is that?
The one that is 206 square feet seems to be deck on top of concrete, but it's hard to tell. Like, I think they just kind of.
Okay. I was asking because that impacts calculation. That's what type it was.
Yeah. And then the other one, the smaller one down there, that is just a small little deck, but they all are factored into the, into the calculations for the existing.
Yeah, well, if they were, if they were just a wood deck and there was no concrete underneath them, it wouldn't count.
Interesting.
So, that's why I'm asking, because it would, it might help you here.
Yeah.
Your proposed garage, does it have a peak going, running up the center of the house and continuing through the new garage?
Yeah, if you want, I don't know which one is the.
So, so you would, okay, so you would have a drain on the front and the back of the house off of that roof?
Yeah. And again, right now, so I wasn't sure if this would get approved, right, so I haven't paid for it, I didn't want to pay for drawings or stuff, so all this stuff I've just kind of done myself. I under, paid for the survey, I understand that now with the trench, have to get like an engineer involved, but wanted to see how far I could take this without, so that's kind of what I'm thinking loosely, probably the top one, but.
So, either one, knowing that you already have a paved driveway in front of the existing garage, you probably want to put a retention trench in that 10 foot space on the side of the property.
Or, or do it in front of the house if there's no, no trees there.
Well, somehow he can get both roof drains from the front and back fed to it as well.
Yeah, or he comes off the front of the house. There's options.
Yeah. And I mean, that new driveway could be pitched that way too to get it, get that water over there, rather than more out into the street with no gutters, no, no curbs.
I think for a trench standpoint.
Uh, we can ask Dan. Dan, I'm sure here has the calculation already made up for you.
I have it too.
Okay.
So, yeah, I mean, just roughly, I had two, two, excuse me, 2.5 feet deep, five feet wide, and then 42 feet long.
Yeah, it would, it's, would have to be probably in the front yard.
Yeah.
Is that to bring it back to 19.5?
Um, no, that would bring it around 18.
Oh, that would be the 18. Okay. Just clarifying for the record.
Yeah. And while you haven't heard it tonight, overall, there's a lot of drainage problems in the township, and sometimes there's a lot of public comment on that because there are, it'll a lot of flooding issues, so the, you know, the goal is to try to mitigate the flooding issues from people and impact their neighboring properties.
Understood.
Which neighborhood is this? I'm a little lost.
I should know the name of it, but it's a really tiny one.
I know.
It was the Herb Subdivision.
Okay. They're not near any floodplain areas? No. No. Yeah.
No, they're not enough. Let me see.
Yeah, the nearest stream or waterway is down the Sanctuary Subdivision off of Pine Grove Road. Okay. So, I move that we approve appeal number Z-24-34 with the addition of a drainage trench as calculated by the township engineer to bring us to 18% and include roof drains on both the front and back of the new addition.
No, give them, give them the choice.
Give them the choice.
Okay.
Okay. So, we can leave that last part out.
Yeah.
All right.
Subject to approval, being township engineers, usually how we phrase it.
Got it.
I'll second.
Any further discussion beyond the comment that I made? Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. Motion carries.
Thank you.
All right. What's up for the December 3 meeting?
So, there's one new one, and then there is another, the continuance that was heard tonight, RUSC, so two total. And then the seventh, there's currently just one, so.
By the way, that was a, the best behaved person here was your son, so just wanted to, just wanted to let you know.
He looks a little tired, and he looks a little tired.
Thank you, guys.
He really was nicely behaved. It's a long night to sit.
All right. Is there, I'd like to thank Matt Connor, he's not here, for all of the years of service he's provided.
I see he has.
I'm wishing the best of luck. On the move. Is there any other business?
No, we have, yeah, we'll have, we'll have the December 3 and then cancel, cancel December 17th, and then we'll be good to go until January. But, yeah, want to echo what Peter said and thank Matt, having engineers on this board is, is very helpful, especially when we get to some of the really complicated stuff, and, and Matt's been very instrumental in sorting out some of that for us laypeople. So, I want to thank Matt and wish everyone a happy, healthy Thanksgiving and a safe Thanksgiving.
Okay. A motion to adjourn?
I, I move we adjourn until our December 3 meeting.
Second.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. Motion carries. Thanks, everybody.
Everyone have a nice Thanksgiving.